We can get started. So I'm just gonna assume that everyone's read it, but I'm happy to read the section aloud, and then we can just take it part by part, if that sounds good. Does anyone have any other suggestions for how to do that, since this is a real-time working session? And I can't see all of you because of the way this is displaying.
Yeah, sorry, my hands raised, and I'll just say, I think that's a great idea to read it out loud, Stephanie. And I wonder if maybe we can just alternate, and everybody can kind of take a turn reading a section.
Oh, I like that idea. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions or comments before we get started? Okay, so the history, the summer of 2020 saw a nationwide movement for Black Lives, the catalyst being the murder of George Floyd. Watching this modern-day lynching, his slow murder over the course of 8 minutes 46 seconds at the hands of those who had sworn to protect and defend, awoke both our country and our community to action. This was not an isolated incident, but the result of 400 years of injustice, firmly grounded in racist policies which continue into our present. Protests, demonstrations, and marches moved our nation and our town, waking many to the deep destructive power of white supremacy. The committee was born directly from the Black Lives Matter movement and indirectly from every struggle in our national history in which has sought to protect and advance human civil rights. This committee is indebted to the Black Lives Matter movement for mobilizing the Fairfax community to take this action. Does someone want to read the next section?
Sorry, just to clarify, are we reading out everything and then doing edits? Or like reading out by section?
What do you think would be better?
I think like, reading it out and then doing edits would be better.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like if we could go back to history.
Just focus on history? Okay, I'm totally open. Is anyone else? I'm fine with that approach. Does anyone have any other? You like that Alexandra? Anyone else?
I like this section by section.
Okay. Let's do it that way then. Okay. So what does the group think of this history or background section?
Leilie's hand is raised.
Thank you.
And Alexandra's.
Whoever was first, and I don't... Leilie, you wanna go?
Sure, okay. I just, you know, minor edits. I don't have substantive remarks. "This committee was born directly from the Black Lives Matter movement and indirectly from every struggle in our national history." Strike and "which has sought to protect and advance human and civil rights." That was my edit.
Thank you. I'm wondering if this should be... I'm wondering if history is the right title, or if it should be background.
Oh, that's a good point.
I'm sorry, but before, somebody else had their hand raised. Who was the other person?
Alexandra.
Alexandra.
Um, so first, I have a couple of questions. Like, I'm curious about the thought process of breaking down each of these sections. And then, a general comment is that there are some of these sentences, all of the sentences are great, but some of them are very wordy. And so I'm wondering if we can go through and rework some of those. Specifically, in this section, the one, the second sentence, watching the modern-day lynching, his slow... That sentence is very wordy. I see like, the importance of it, but I'm wondering if we can, maybe it's "this modern-day lynching at the hands who had sworn to protect and defend awoke both our country and our community to action." And then, because in my opinion, modern-day lynching is strong, and I think very clear.
One more time Alexandra, your rewording?
Yeah. "This modern-day lynching at the hands who had sworn to protect and defend awoke both our country and our community to action." Just a suggestion, like, we don't have to do that, but... Um, and then, where it says "born directly", I'm wondering if maybe it was inspired by? I don't know, I mean, I'm born, I'm just not sure about "born directly".
Yeah.
We're not... I don't know, I'm just wondering, maybe "inspired by" could be another word. And then, in full agreement of Leilie's suggestion. And then I'm wondering if there's a way, since this is the first part that people are gonna read, if there's, we clearly talk a lot about the Black Lives Matter movement, which is great. I'm wondering if there's a way that we can include other communities as well, LGBTQ, etc. Just because this is what people are gonna see first. So, those are just my comments on this section, but... Yeah, just suggestions.
Serena, I see your hand. Go ahead.
Veronica, just a suggestion, if you go up to the top and click on editing, you can go and like, switch it to suggestions. And then whatever you edit, it'll like, give you like a checkmark thing. So that might be easier to like, do it, because I think it's kind of important to me that, yeah, that's it, that eight minutes and 46 seconds is left in. And then like, you know, if we all like, agreed on it, then you could like, press the checkmark and it would like, make that action.
I also think maybe we could break it into two sentences, if that's too wordy.
And then, the "born" suggestion edit wasn't changed. The committee was, was the suggestion "inspired by" instead of "born directly"? Do you see that?
Yeah, I think that's way better to say "inspired".
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Um, I guess I, my bad for not realizing that this is what we're doing. You know, because it makes me wonder whether we should have been doing this, like, what we're doing right now, like, all of us in this document, making our edits and suggestions, and then convening and talking about them.
Yeah. Ideally, yes, but we're not able, we have to do everything in the public.
Yeah, the public would see all of our edits. I mean, it would, I mean, this, this document wasn't drafted in the public.
Right.
It couldn't be edited out of view of the public. And all of our kind of fingerprints would be all over it. But, anyway, here we are.
Yeah, I don't disagree. It's not a deal, but it is the guidance that was provided. I don't know that Google Docs are approved, if you will, for what you're saying. In fact, that's the guidance I've been given, that we can't use Google Docs, so...
Soft word, okay. All right.
I just wanna lift that up, Leilie. I feel aware of the ways in which it's very briefly, and then happy to do it right back into editing, but I think what you're saying is so important, and it continues to be brought up in terms of our capacity to make strides that are just simply efficient, not doing anything secret. Anything that would need to get approved would be viewed by the public, and everything that we would vote on would get public comment on, but that there's certain ways in which the limitations of the Brown Act on our committee are proving to be really stifling to actually like, getting anything done effectively. So I just wanna lift that up, and maybe we can talk about it in the meeting, the regular RISJ meeting tomorrow at some point, if you have the space. Thank you.
And thank you, thank you both. In response to Alexandra, the comment you had around if you, if it should lead into it from a Black Lives Matter, like what? Is that what you wanted to do? I mean, I guess backing up, this would obviously live on the town website under the RISJ committee page, right? And so, you know, your suggestion is to even back up further and describe what Black Lives Matter is, or is that what you're saying?
No. I'm not quite sure what you're referring to, but I guess my point was just that like, in, in terms of that last sentence, just like how, well, first, I really, I'm curious, the, the, why these specific sections, like history, Fairfax's response, is that like a, something that we're required to have on the website?
No, none of it is, really. So, the, and any, but Veronica, if you wanna chime in, feel free, but the, the idea is for public consumption, right? Oh, I wanna learn more about what this committee, what the scope of this committee is, what they're focused on, what their mission is, what their long-term, you know, ideal state is, what their, like I said, what their focus and what their scope is, right? So that's the public-facing content, as far as who we are, what we're all about. And so, to provide background about how we came to be, because we are a new committee, and it's not a standard, you know, all towns have, you know, park and rec and planning commissions, and this one is, you know, pretty new, so to just share some background is, we thought was a good idea. It sounds like Liesel's.
Yeah, I just wanna say, so I wasn't sure if we had decided to change the heading for this particular area to something like "background" or "context" or "inspiration" or something, because it doesn't really go into the history so much as describe the reason why we're having this committee.
Thank you. Does that help Alexandra?
Yeah, yeah, just more curiosity than...
Okay, are you feeling that it's not needed, that section, or?
Um, I guess I'm more feeling that in the Fairfax's response part, but we can, I can say that when we get there. I don't wanna jump ahead.
All right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm aware that you can't see hands, so I'm speaking, but I recognize how important not over speaking over anybody is. So I hope that it's all right, that I'm speaking without having you call on me, Stephanie, and I'm wondering if other folks, how we're feeling.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, interrupt me and tell me to stop, if you need to, please. Two thoughts, one is, I wonder if we can, just naming that it is 7:30, and we wanna get through all of this hopefully within the hour, and we're only at the first section. And so curious, in terms of process, if folks can continue to offer their suggested edits, and I'll just type them in, and maybe in five minutes, we can decide on this background piece. What we could do is go through, and if anybody has an objection to one of the edits, that you can give a thumbs down, and then we'll pause and call on you, so that you can let us know, and we can then decide together what to do with that. But just in terms of efficiency for the process. And then the second piece, Alexandra, to just speak from being on the Mission and Vision Subcommittee, Amal and Taiyo and Griselda were also on that committee with us, Stephanie? Is that correct?
Yes.
So, speaking kind of, I wish they were here to speak it too, because there's a lot that they put into this. But that there was this recognition of how complex, why we're here is in some regards, not complex. How situation, how contextualized what happened last summer, particularly with George Floyd and with Black Lives Matter, were in regards to the momentum to create the committee, and felt an importance to center that in, in the mission and vision. And then we do include the other demographics that are marginalized in, in the latter part, but I really appreciate the idea of making sure to include that in the first statement, since if we keep the background, that it is the first thing people would see. And so I'd love to, maybe if you all could help me, just go through the list of what demographic, what groups we can identify, in addition to LGBTQ group, or folks, like what, what else we can include here, so that we really are recognizing the social justice and racial equity of all, of all the groups here.
Liesel, is your hand up, or is that from before?
It's from before, sorry.
Looks like Leilie has...
Yeah, just real quick, I'm supposed to be keeping time, but nobody's asked me this said time. Is it just the hour?
Will you give us, like, will you set it for like, 40 minutes? And that'll give us some buffer before we wanna go to public? Thank you.
Okay, you got it.
Appreciate that. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. So does anybody have any comments about what other groups to include in this? Or do we wanna table that, like, add a comment, like, this is something we wanna add here? Because I do think it's addressed, maybe, or not maybe, but it is addressed below, at least that was our intention. And so we can grabs, grab some content from...
Can we like bookmark it and, and work it later? Because I, like, we just need to like, put a little comments, and we need to find a sentence that expresses this, and then
Yeah.
Yeah, forever. I mean, the other thing we could do is say that we want some of these things to be better. Are we gonna have another meeting, or is this our final meeting on Mission and Vision?
Given the number of us, or Alexandra, do you wanna say something? Go ahead.
Um, yeah, really quickly, just because of the time, I didn't, someone just said it's already 7:30, and I didn't realize how quickly that went by. I'm wondering if this isn't our last meeting, talking about this, and perhaps we can just keep going through with the edits, and then the ad hoc committee can then take it from there, because I think wording gets complicated, and, and there's a lot going on. So, I mean, I trust the committee to be able to take our suggestions and and rework this, so I think that might be helpful in terms of time.
So not actual content development, but just comments and suggestions, and then take it back to the Subcommittee? Yeah, that was, that was totally the idea, and then months after months went by, so... But I think, given the number of us too, we should talk about whether it makes sense to, yeah, I don't, I don't personally think it makes sense to finalize it tonight, but it sounds like that's what you're saying as well. Does anyone have any other comments before we go into the Fairfax response? Liesel, your hand still up?
I just wanna say, I took that, if we could just make comments about what we think should change, and the committee can rework it, that would be great.
Okay. Are we good to proceed? Yeah, okay. Please speak, if not, because I can't.
Um, can we decide, sorry, can we, before we even move on? Can we decide with the history things, like what, if we're like unanimous on some of the things we're saying here?
Can we decide? I missed the last part of your...
Like, I know, like, me and Alexandra, like, we're talking about changing that second sentence in different ways. So I think if we could just come to a decision there.
Right now, or before we wrap the meeting?
Right now.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I was just saying that maybe it could be broken up into two sentences. And then Alexandra, you were just saying that it should be one sentence, but take out the part in the commas, right?
Well, more my point was, was basically, it's just very wordy, so breaking up it up into two sentences also works. I was just making a suggestion to try to make my statement more helpful versus just saying it's wordy. So, I'm totally good with two sentences.
Will you two break it up for me? Make some suggestions for those two sentences?
Yeah.
I think maybe like, "his slow murder over the course of 8 minutes 46 seconds at the hands of those who had sworn to protect and defend him" "awoke our country..." Sorry, I'm turning it into one sentence. I was gonna say like, this... Sorry.
It's okay.
Maybe like, "his slow murder over the course of" to "all the way to those who had sworn to protect and defend", could be a sentence, but it could like, turn into a complete sentence somehow. And then, "this modern-day lynching awoke both our community, our country and our community to action."
How's that read? Can I read it out loud, so that you all hear it? Because I know the lines make me sometimes confused about where, how to read it. "His slow murder over the course..." I'm feeling really aware of how alive this is for everybody right now, with the court hearing happening this week, and just wanna pause to acknowledge how much that's bringing up in my body as a white woman, and I'm just aware of folks on this committee feeling that strongly. And so I'm, I'm sorry that that, this is... "His slow murder over the course of 8 minutes and 46 seconds was at the hands of those who had sworn to protect and defend. This modern-day lynching awoke both our country and our community to action." That's okay. Thanks. Ladies.
So I think this is good, but I guess I was wondering if our decision was to not directly wordsmith it, but just say something like, "the sentence is too wordy, either break it up into two or remove this clause", or are we gonna go through everything and kind of redo the sentences and read them out and decide on the exact wording? Just curious.
What I heard is that particular, those two, that phrasing was really important, and she, I don't wanna speak for you, but you wanted to have some you wanted to finalize that as much as possible in this session, rather than have us work offline on that as a Subcommittee. But the rest of the document, we can try to just take suggestions, is that unless there's something somebody really feels strongly about, again, I'm fine with that methodology. Are we ready to move forward? Okay. Okay, so can you scroll up just a touch? Thank you. Okay, so Fairfax's response, "Immediately following the murder of George Floyd, Black Lives Matter protests were held in Fairfax in the downtown parcade, and this became a daily gathering of activists exercising their First Amendment rights. Citizens began to further mobilize, reaching out to partner with anti-racist organizations and develop, there's a type of their notions of alternative solutions for police practices, among other social justice and anti-racist causes. Organized rallies were held at one in particular, a demonstration of activists laying, laying in the downtown street for 8 minutes and 46 seconds. Blocking traffic captured the attention of the town and the media. Tension was created in the town, and strong voices and opinions were heard at town council meetings. Residents expressed anger with the, quote, 'foe progressive' 'local mindset' and 'racist legacy of redlining', while other residents expressed frustration with the graffiti on town property, and in response expressed, quote, 'all lives matter.' At the same time, many others expressed having never witnessed racism in over 30 years of living in Fairfax. Community leaders, community thinkers, and local activists engaged in frequent dialogue throughout this time, and the ideation of a racial equity and social justice committee was born. It was agreed a long-term commitment was needed from the town to create an anti-racist diverse community."
So, I just wanna say, I think that there is a lot of extra words in here that could go, and I don't wanna get too wordsmithy, but it's, it just feels a little bit like, there's, like, you know, do we need to activize, active exercising our First Amendment rights? I don't know. Do people develop notions of alternative solutions, or do they develop alternative solutions? You know, are rallies organized by nature, or do we need to say organized rallies, can we just say rallies? And are there strong voices and opinions, or strong opinions revoked? I don't know, this just seems like there's a lot of extra stuff.
Yeah.
Will you please share, Liesel? I always love how fast your brain works and how fast you talk, because I love how fast your brain works, but will you just go through the other things, and I'll continue to strike them out? So, I'm really grateful for how well you're, how fast you're bringing it.
I'd too, this afternoon. You know, people may not agree, I'm just wondering about the first sentence. Can it just say "daily gathering of activists"? Or is it important to say "First Amendment rights"?
Great, okay, I'll note that.
And then I'm wondering if I could just say "develop alternative solutions for police practices". And then I'm wondering if it could say either rallies were organized, or rallies were held and at one, then not in particular, just at, and at one, demonstrations of activists. And here I am wordsmithing when I said don't wordsmith, and I'm wondering if it should say intersections to street.
That's fair.
Then, I think that's the sentence.
Sorry? Say that one more time?
I was wondering if it could say intersection instead of street, because the fact that it was an intersection seems somehow very notable, it blocked two streets, basically. And then, I just think the sentence, like, tension was created, I think it's better to be direct, like, this created tension. And then I just think the sentence like tension was created. I think it's better to be direct like this created tension.
I think you didn't you suggest to take out banned opinions like just strong voices is enough.
I would say strong, it might be strong opinions were voiced, but strong opinions were voiced or something like that.
Uh, okay.
Then I think that you should say some residents instead of residents because.
And I see Serena's hands up.
Well, I'm gonna stop saying and talking.
I'm kind of like going off the same thing. Um, I see that sentence, um. Many others expressed having never witnessed racism in over thirty years of living in Fairfax. Like, I don't know if there's something specific that happened thirty years ago, or like why thirty is a number.
I think the, thank you. I think the idea was in that thirty years of living here, no, we've heard this several times. I've I've never seen any racist events or any racist activity take place in the thirty years I've lived here.
Decades or years or something.
We could just put simply other residents expressed, sorry. Um, many others expressed having never witnessed racism in all of their time living in Fairfax. Does that feel okay?
Yeah.
Are you done, Serena?
Yes.
Okay, I see Alex's.
Um, so just a thought that I had, um, the last two sentences where it says community leaders, community thinkers, and then to the end. Um, I'm wondering if maybe that could be moved up to the background because it sounds like that's where the committee started to form was when community leaders, community thinkers, local activists engaged in frequent dialogue. And then it talks about the idea of the committee happening. So I'm wondering if there's a way to kind of um, have those two flow together a bit. I think that too would kind of fix the the thought I had at the top. Just to kind of flow it together that this was inspired by the Black Lives Movement and then the community took that inspiration and worked together.
You're making that thought is making me wonder if we even need a separate section, like, is it all just background?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but I didn't wanna over insert my
No over inserting, no hurt feelings.
Alexandra.
What did you say Veronica?
I said, please continue to insert yourself Alexandra.
Yeah.
I mean, if I miss something that somebody's saying as I'm typing something else, please don't hesitate to be like, wait Veronica, you didn't add that into the comments. I'm gonna add what you just said.
I'm kind of going off of what you just said Veronica, there was a point where you like wrote a reply on one of the suggestions that you had made and you didn't press the button to send it.
Thanks Serena.
Do you still have your hand up Alexandra?
Oh, no, sorry, I forgot to put down.
Okay, anyone else on this section? Does anyone have any thoughts about combining them or we can get to that at the end?
Um, I think they should be combined. Because then you're just going in the country's background, not really background of the RESJ.
Okay. I'm gonna continue. Is that okay? Anyone not okay? All right, I'm not hearing anything. Um. Indigenous heritage, we pay respect to the Miwok peoples past, present and future and their continuing presence in Marin County and throughout the Miwok diaspora. We acknowledge that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Miwok people of present day Marin County and offer our care and gratitude for the land, water, air and living beings here. We are committed to resisting colonialism and our ingrained colonial mindset and the imbalance with Mother Earth by honoring Miwok heritage through the support of indigenous led programming. In addition, we fully intend to move deeper than landed acknowledgements and performative actions toward truly honoring the Coast Miwok heritage. Making that heritage visible and present. With the above statement, we also seek to remember that we are we are all immigrants.
Can I note that just, um you know, a lot of times native people have said, we're still here. So I don't want to say we are all immigrants because some people here actually aren't immigrants, um, even way back. Unless you, you know, count crossing the Bering Strait or something. So I I'm worried that even though it's well intended is othering in a way that makes it seem like native people have vanished.
Lisa, are you finished with your comment? Okay. Um, thank you Alexandra.
Yeah, so I'm I'm wondering if perhaps this could be adopted as our land acknowledgement. Or um, and then perhaps it's not quite part of the mission and vision statement, but maybe it's it's in its own section. Um, and this could be read at our meetings because I think it's really great. Um, but if it is included in our mission and vision statement, I'd like, I'd hope that we could maybe add more specific like details of what we're going to do to make um, Coast Miwok folks visible and present to use the words of the document. Um, but I I really like the statement as potentially becoming um, our land acknowledgement because I know right now we're using the um the town councils and it kind of seems like we just like jumped on board with that and we didn't actually write it.
Am I the only per- I think I'm the only person with my hand up.
Sorry, I was I was looking at the document thinking about the comment. Go ahead.
Um, I think if we're gonna have this be our land acknowledgement, we should, you know, reach out first and see that that, you know, was okay. And also I think this should be at the top before the background.
Are you done with your comment?
Yeah, approval.
So I'm just gonna respond to what I've heard. I really like Alexandra's idea to integrate it or adopt it into RESJ. Um, I also am mindful of the practice of just reading it, right? And that just reading it and then moving on to business feels performative. Um, and so I've sought feedback on that and the feedback is or the guidance has been really should be talking about why the land acknowledgement is important after reading it. And that'll help anchor you and help it feel not su- such a routine performative sort of action. Um, so I'm just gonna throw it out there. I also think it's really important to have as a foundational element and sort of integral to our work to have on this page. Because if it's not here, to to my earlier comment, like, you know, just this is a page, this will be a page for public consumption and I I really want the public to know that. I personally um feel it's really important. So I I wouldn't mind it being in both places, but that's just my comment. Do you have your hand up Serena? Where's that from before?
Sorry, that was struggling.
Okay. Um. Anybody else before we continue? Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
Uh, I'd just like to second Serena's thought of putting it at the top. That was more kind of what I was getting at, but. Um.
Oh, you weren't saying remove it? You weren't saying taken it?
No. Yeah.
Okay. We ready to move on? Okay. How are we doing on time? Are you still with us Lily?
Maybe.
Speaking but mute. Um, we have sixteen more minutes.
Okay. So before I start reading the vision, um, so and you might all know this, but the the guiding principles that the subcommittee went through is the vision statement answers the question, what do we want to achieve? It should serve to motivate people and inspire people to want to contribute. Um, and should answer the questions, where are we going? Why should we go there? And what is, you know, winning, if you will, what is sort of the the end state? Um, a way to think about it is if success were a place, how would we know we got there? Um. So the racial equity and social justice committee establishes Fairfax's vision for equity. This committee visualizes Fairfax as an anti racist town where a person's race, religion, ethnicity, ability, class, sexual orientation, where'd you go? Or gender are not predeterminants of the quality of life that person's present or future, nor of their physical or psychological safety or ability to access resources. We envision a town where economic mobility and equity for black and brown members of our community is made possible through specific opportunities to address the policies which have historically excluded them. This committee envisions a seismic change during which the community unites in solidarity in a continuing effort to identify and eliminate racist and discriminatory policies, practices and cultural messages and norms that reinforce differential outcomes based on one's identity. Where public education focused on anti racism teaches non violent ways to confront racism and discrimination when it arises. And we seek to create a town where our education policing housing policies and reparation efforts reflect these ideals. We understand that when we work toward equity and equality for those most marginalized and wrongly criminalized, namely African Americans. The quality of life for all people is improved. Therefore, we remain firm in our vision of an anti racist Fairfax where black lives always matter. Serena.
Um, I have two things with that. Um, first I was just wondering what maybe I have to like reread it, but I was just wondering what the sentence where public education focused on anti racism. That sentence, I'm just wondering what that means, like, why is that? What is that? Talking about the RESJ or like public schools or?
Supposed to be connected to the prior sentence in some way as opposed to being standalone? Right, I'm sorry, Alexandra has a.
Not ignoring your question, I'm reading it.
Yeah, for sure. I remember that being, um. If I'm remembering correctly, it was in terms of the ways and kind of speaking to our education and outreach subcommittee essentially and bringing them into the vision and saying we recognize that there is a mass need for public education around what racism looks like, what supremacy looks like. And yeah, and how to engage with in that dialogue non violently.
Um, okay, and then also with that, like I don't know if I like the word nonviolent being used in that. Um. And also I think that um the sentence, we understand why we work towards equity and equality for those most marginalized and wrongly criminalized. I think, you know, it could, uh, this is kind of like the comment from earlier, you could also talk about, um bringing more intersectionality into it, I guess, like you know, people who have their, don't have human rights because of like certain laws or like um even like thinking about, um the right to vote and how that's being attacked. I think could maybe like be a part of that. That's uh, that's it for me. Also, like another example would be like transgender rights being attacked. Or not exist.
Anything else? Thank you. Alexandra?
I think Lisa had her hand up before me.
Okay.
Uh, if you want to go first, it's fine because I'm talking a lot, so.
Uh, okay, um. So I think there are some sentences that are super wordy and not, don't take them out, but just like maybe break them up. And then um, kind of going along with what Serena was saying about the public education, there's a sentence. We envision a town where economic mobility and equity for black and brown members of our community is made possible through specific opportunities. Maybe like what specific opportunities, just because it was mentioned that the vision is specifically gonna talk about like what what our success would look like. And so what opportunities would we be? Have like coming up with as our committee, um, just maybe a little more detail on that. And then um, in the sentence, this committee envisions a seismic change, maybe in which uh, versus during, I don't know, it just to me, it sounded like so is that only gonna happen while change is occurring or is it that the change that's happening? And then, um in the sentence that Serena was talking about public education, it says, when it arises, why are we um, talking about racism and discrimination when it arises? Shouldn't we be looking at that before it happens? And then that's it. Was that too fast Veronica? I wasn't looking at my screen.
No, I was just, I forgot as I was in full agreement nodding that I'm supposed to be typing what you're saying.
Okay. Uh, that's it.
Can I ask a question in response to that? Um. So for the specific opportunities, um, you want, you wanted to say something like such as after that?
Yeah, I mean, I I don't see, I I think that would be helpful just for what our true vision is. I mean, I think it's helpful to know some of the names, some of the things that we'll, that we hope to do in our vision statement, and then we ho- hold ourselves to that and we do them. Um.
Yeah.
That's that's just a suggestion.
Yeah, I hear that. My my concern is that I don't want it to. Yeah, I hear that. My, my concern is that I don't want it to be conveyed as you know, there's a ton of work, right? And so I don't want to, I'm, I'm, not that I don't want to, I'm just I guess, I wonder if we list, you know, one or two against that statement to illustrate that statement, but we're not describing examples in some of the other statements.
Yeah, I, I think that's the, the thing is that like, we should do that for all of them. And I, and I understand that like that could get like way long, and that's not ideal either, but I just think it's for clarity purposes that it's important to name the work that needs to be done. I mean, especially with economic mobility. It's super important.
Okay.
Maybe that's all things that could be in the mission, like those specific.
Well, the, yeah, and I mean, in, in my mind, there's a lot of goals and um, outcomes um, connected to those goals that are listed here that the subcommittees, once they're developed. Thank you, Timekeeper, will be listed as well. Um. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe, maybe this is like a conversation for the like ad hoc committee. It's just a suggestion, so I don't want to like eat up our time.
Yeah. Lili, was that? Your hands up? Okay.
I see Liesel's hand up, and I have my hand up too.
Okay. Whoever was first, Liesel.
So I just wanted to point out that, um, okay, Fairfax's vision for equity should equity be capitalized. Um, okay, and then gender, I think, should say gender identity. And then, um, predeterminants is misspelled. I think the sentence where public education focused on anti-racism, et cetera, that's not a sentence really, like, there's no, it's not grammatically a sentence. And the suspicion I had was that it's, it flows out of the prior sentence. Where all of these things happen, and this is one of the additional things happens as a result of the seismic change. Or something needs to be done to make that technically a sentence. Um, so I'm not going to belabor that point, somebody can think about that later. Um, I guess, though, also finally you know, a little bit with the, um, the most marginalized and wrongly criminalized, namely African Americans. Undoubtedly much true, but also I think that there's been a lot of discussion about, I, I don't know about prioritizing oppressions, like we could also say that who is the most marginalized and wrongly criminalized? I don't know, we could also say Native Americans who've been subjected to genocide. There too, I mean, it's just, it's a little, it, it's sort of, um, it's kind of important, but then it seems a little problematic.
Hearing that feedback?
Yeah. You know, some fun sounds, some fun computer sounds in your background.
Okay, um, Liesel, are you finished?
Uh, yes, sorry.
Okay.
Mercy Serena.
And Serena, you have your hand up?
Veronica goes before me.
Thanks, Serena. Um, I forget what I was gonna say.
Um, I was wondering maybe if African Americans wasn't the best term for that, maybe it could be like ABC or something.
ABC?
Yeah, um. I believe that's African, Black, and Caribbean. I could be wrong, let me Google it.
Oh, I remembered what I was gonna say. I am so grateful to be doing this with all of you and remembering why we are here. This feels so important and timely.
Are you ready to move on? Or Serena, your hands up?
Sorry, didn't put it down.
Okay, I'm going to move forward because we do need to get to public comment and won't be mindful of time. Okay, mission, um, and similarly, I'm just going to read kind of what are guiding. Um, so the mission statement answers the question, why do we exist? Um, the purpose for whom, what we do. Um. And can often include, but, uh, value statements. Um, so with that, um. We exist to eliminate racial inequities in Fairfax. Oh, wait, I just realized we were supposed to go round robin. Why do I keep reading these?
Okay.
Is it, does anybody want to read? No?
I'm okay with it too.
What's that? Okay. We exist to eliminate racial inequities in Fairfax by developing an actionable framework through subcommittees focused on education and outreach, police practices and public safety alternatives, affordable housing, and Fairfax town governance and policy. We will identify racial inequities in our town and take immediate, immediate action to create policies and solutions that will increase racial equity in Fairfax. We will consult and partner with other organizations and towns throughout Marin rooted in anti-racism to bolster our vision. We are committed to ensuring all policies within Fairfax are analyzed and reworked until they firmly reflect our town's commitment to anti-racism. As an affluent town with the most racially disparate county in the state of California, we acknowledge that wealth disparities are an inherent effect of racism and the long unjust history of racism in this country. Therefore, we are committed to creating opportunities for economic accessibility and mobility for our Black community members, our Indigenous community members, and our community members of color. And we hold ourselves accountable to them. We are each individually committed to persistent self-reflection as we work to dismantle specific policies which have and continue to systemically and negatively impact racial equity. We undertake the mis- this mission with the understanding that racism harms all individuals regardless of their race, religion, ethnicity, ability, class, sexual orientation, or gender by maintaining an artificial and restrictive definition of what it is to be human. An anti-racist Fairfax is a healthier, more stable Fairfax for everyone within our community.
I'm just going to jump in and say that we're at time, and while I have your attention, I'm afraid that eight thirty is going to have to be a hard stop for me. So, just, um, letting you know that.
Okay, thank you. So, off the bat, I know that we, the subcommittees need to be, the names of the subcommittees need to be tweaked a little bit.
And I see Alexandra's hand up as well.
Okay. Alexandra?
Um, so, just a few things, uh, vision is capitalized. I don't know if that was intentional. Bolster our vision. And then, in the next sentence where it says we are committed to ensuring all policies within Fairfax are analyzed and reworked. Um, I'm wondering if there's an assumption being made that all policies will need to be reworked? Maybe there's just a way to, because I understand, maybe you're saying that you're going, you, that we want to analyze all policies, but I would caution against the assumption that they'll also all need to be reworked. And then that's it.
Liesel?
I'm mute, sorry. Um, so I spent some time reading it, I guess, one of the things that I will ask, I guess, in a way, is I'm fairly certain that the focus of this committee is racial inequities in Fairfax. But, you know, I think people have mentioned earlier in this about whether we were going to talk about other issues such as, you know, um, the LGBTQ rights or what have you. Um, and so I just wanted to put out that people have sort of brought that up. And, um, sometimes I think that racial equity and social justice is that meant to be all part of racial equity, or is it, you know, is the, is the, is the, um, sometimes I wonder what the, the charge was for us, was it to look at other things like antisemitism and ableism and whatnot uh, in, in, in conjunction with racism or focused specifically on racism, I suspect it's specifically racism, I'm just going to throw it out there. Um, there was another thing, um. I'm just wondering if we could say, where we says we will consult and partner. If we can just say we will consult and partner with other anti-racist organizations and towns throughout Marin, and then take out the rooted in anti-racism.
Can we stick with that because I'm not finding it, but I know it's there.
Yeah, it's a
It's in the part with Black text.
Okay, and tell me what you said again, Liesel?
I'm wondering if we, so instead of saying, I wonder if we can say we will consult and partner with other anti-racist organizations and towns throughout Marin, and then just take out rooted in anti-racism.
And then, um, I, I, this is a, like, I don't know how to say this, but, um, I'm wondering if we can say, so the last sentence in sort of that paragraph, therefore, we are committed to creating opportunities for economic accessibility and mobility. If we could say present and future, because I think, um, sometimes when we're in a place like Fairfax where our communities of color are very small, um, people like, okay, well, it's too good stuff for the people that are here, but we should also be doing good stuff to make sure that people, more people can be here. And that's just a, a personal, so we don't really need, that's not a huge issue. Um. Finally, I'm wondering if we can have this sentence that starts, oh, we are each individually committed to systematically, et cetera, et cetera. Um. To have continued to systematically negatively impact racial equity, and we just add social justice since we're the ResJ. Again, minor point, so I'm not going to belabor it if people don't want it, that's fine. And then finally, I think I'm wondering about when we talk about racism harms all individuals, um, if we can continue to say gender identity, and also, we might want to put age in there, but, again, small, so there you go.
I'm not seeing any other, any other hands.
Liesel, I feel like I missed your second to last, um, point. Anybody?
Yeah, I, I remember it's, um, it's about like four lines above where we are right now at the end of the sentence. Um, you're, like, go down two lines. Yeah, and then, and social justice.
And I apologize, I can't actually see because I have such a small computer, so I'm reading off of my version and not sure what's happening in the other version.
Anybody have anything else? Ready to go to the public? Okay. And do you want to ask for if anyone from the public?
Um, yeah, I just wanted, so on the agenda, it says adopt this, so are we just, we're skipping over that part of the agenda? Because it's not complete.
Um, it says adopt or adapt?
Adopt. It, like, um, part A of the agenda was to make suggested edits. And B of the agenda is to adopt, take action to adopt it, so.
No, I don't think we're ready to do that.
Okay. So I'll go to public comment. So that's what is on the agenda now.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yep. And, okay, so I have two hands, Daria. Go ahead, Daria, you have three minutes.
Oh, boy, I hope I can do this in three minutes. I, I, I'm in the unique position to have been on both sides of this table. And I have to say, um, how wonderful it is to be on the side of the table in terms of observing what are a deeply thoughtful process is going on among you. Um, I, like Veronica, am, um, pretty, um, pretty awestruck by what's going on here, so, um, that's, um, support from me, and I hope to stay involved and continue to, um, participate. Um, so I have some bullet points about the, um, the discussion tonight um, regarding engagement with the public. I couldn't see the document at all from where I sat. I saw, saw half of it, so I couldn't read and participate in, you know, sort of evaluating. And of course, everybody, I think, recognized that the process was a little cumbersome, but an important one, and, um, I think a consideration of an ad hoc committee that would do the, the, you know, the difficult work and then bring it to the larger committee might be something to consider. And even, uh, if it's a possibility to post to the public, um, the work in progress, in case there are any uh, Fairfax nerds out there that want to keep up on what's going on on the ResJ. Um, you know, articulating that process and offering engagement. Um, you know, I thought Lili's comment about, um, um, more efficient convening was, made a lot of sense in an ad hoc committee and, um, you know, trying to avert the Brown Act constrictions that get in the way of, um, a lot of, uh, a, a more efficient process. Um, I, I love Liesel's comment about we are not all, we are not all immigrants, really, really important perspective. Um, and Alexandra regarding the land acknowledgement. Um, and Stephanie's comment about, um, that not being a performative act and, you know, how to communicate that in a way that is, uh, as deeply sincere as the committee is. So I just wanted to say, um, comment on those points and, um, say how I feel proud of you. And, uh, yeah, thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you. Um, okay, so Naomi, you're next, three minutes.
Hi, everyone. Um, I know some of you personally, and some of you I don't know personally, but I just really wanted to um, call in and thank all of you for being there and doing this work. Um, as, um, the previous caller mentioned, it, it's not an easy process to build a rich document like this together with a number of people, that, that kind of collaborative writing is super challenging. And I think you guys are amazing, the way that you are handling it, um, even despite the, 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 the challenges. Or, you know, there might be a more efficient way to go about doing it, and I encourage you guys to explore that, but also um, you know, sometimes the most efficient processes are not always the most thorough processes, so um, I just think you guys are doing a great job of working together and being super respectful each other, and you guys are all incredible writers and thinkers, so keep doing what you're doing. Thank you so much for being there and doing this super important work.
Okay, great, thank you. And that's it, I don't see any other hands. Oh, I see actually one, Dee Lee? Okay, go ahead, Dee, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Ann, Deborah Benson, I am a resident of Fairfax. A lot of what I'm hearing and looking, you know, looking at in this document, I am seeing that I disagree with, with a lot of the entire premise, because the entire premise seems to be built upon seeing Fairfax as a racist community. And in, in my entire time in Fairfax, I do not see that, I do not feel that. Fairfax, someone asked me many years ago, "Why do you live in Fairfax?", and I said, "Fairfax is very tolerant", and it always has been, and you all are talking about being tolerant about gender identity people and LGBT, and you probably, I would guess, if you do live here, I wonder how many of you have lived here long enough? Do you remember Opie? He was a Fairfax resident for many years who hung out downtown with he, she, with a big padded bra and hairy legs and a short skirt, and he was part of our Fairfax community, he, she. So Fairfax has always been tolerant. I, I also take exception to the part in your document where you say that many voices spoke at the, at the council meeting to say that we want this to be not an anti-racist community. Many of those voices were not local voices. You also spoke about leaders, activists, all agreed, community leaders, thinkers, and activists all agreed that this is a really important the committee to form. Well, I didn't see anything about the majority of the people and the rest of the committee. I think that you're running down a road, what I'm hearing here is, is in the attempt to be anti-discriminatory, I am seeing you going down a road of being, of creating more discrimination. There's no room in your premise for any voices of dissent. I heard of, 30 seconds, thank you for that. A town council meeting at the beginning of this whole thing, I heard Veronica say, "We don't want anyone on this committee who is pro-police because they wouldn't have an open mind", and that's kind of what I feel coming from you all, in a sense. And I, I think that you have to take caution in the direction you're going in in, in achieving the goals that you're trying to achieve. The goals are great, but thank you for hearing me.
Okay, great, thank you. And is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Okay, that's it. So it is?
8:25.
8:25.
Okay, so, thank you so much. Really grateful that we had this opportunity, and I want to confirm our next steps and take any other suggestions as far as what our process will be. So we got a lot of hard edits, and then we got a lot of suggested, you know, comments and edits, and what I heard is that we'd like the subcommittee, which, so Amal is obviously no longer a committee member, so she's no longer on the subcommittee, so there's, it would be Tai Yu, myself, Veronica, and Griselda. Making another version, so version 2.0, if you will, and take that back to the res Jay committee. And what I'm unclear on is if we want a similar session as, like this, which, you know, I know it's not ideal. Or I can see what, if there's any opportunity to have, you know, like you were saying, Laili, a Word doc or a Google doc, I've broached this in the past, but we can get formal guidance on it. Does any comments about that last step, like how we would ultimately consider this a final? The final draft? Go ahead. I saw, Lysel, you had your hand up and then you took it down. Okay. Veronica?
I think the idea of taking it back to the ad hoc committee and, you know, speaking for myself, and I believe the rest of us will definitely be taking everything that you all said into, you know, that'll be the focus of how to really reflect what we've all decided tonight, to the very best of our ability, and then to bring it to a, not a special meeting, but to have it folded into a res Jay meeting where we have that time, where we've sent it out to everybody. Laili, as you kind of mentioned at the beginning, we've, we send it out to all the res Jay members, and then you all, we all make edits prepared already. I know we can't make the edits offline, but that we have the edits already in mind, and we can kind of come right away with some of them, and hopefully there'll be much fewer, because we've really done this hard work. So that would be my suggestion, that we take it to the ad hoc, and then we have version two available for our next res Jay meeting, and have like 20 minutes on it, and have that sent out to res Jay members prior, you know, week prior, to be able to get, have their feedback ready.
Okay. Alex, thank you. Alexandra, are you raising your hand?
Yeah, um, so, just a thought, when Veronica was speaking, I, what I did was I made a copy of the document and then made my own comments in the same way Veronica did, but none of, nobody else can see it, so it's still within the Brown Act, and then it's easier to just read off. But I'm thinking, I would agree, if we have time in res Jay to do this, it would be great, just because some of our committee members aren't here specifically. The people of color that drafted this, I think it's really important that they're here. So if we were to do a special meeting, I hope that we could prioritize having the members who wrote the document here, specifically the people of color. But I hope, I also hope that we can find time in res Jay, so that everyone can be present.
In response, I didn't quite follow your, and Laili, I'm mindful if you need to look, if you need to go. Are you okay with how this is? Okay. I wasn't totally clear on how you were saying we can accommodate Brown Act and have our own working singular document. Are you saying you, you could send us your edits? Is that what you're saying? I'm not, I wasn't following that.
No, so you can, so you can, if you make a copy of it, that's just yours, you can make edits on it? As like notes? And then when we come into the meeting, everything's already in front of you, so you don't have to like, you wouldn't have to like, re-read, re-remember your notes, like, everything would be there in front of you, and it's, could be more efficient for all of us.
So as far as instructions for the committee, we send it out, here's, here's a 2.0 version that we worked up, and we recommend you make, you know, edits on your own copy to have at hand for, for the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I wasn't following that, that's a great suggestion. And 20 minutes sound good to you? I, I think it's like a minimum personally, given what we just went through in an hour and a half, but not including public time, we think 20 minutes. Okay. Okay, anybody else have any comments before we wrap up?
I just wanted to say thank you to the group that drafted it as well as everyone tonight, because, you know, it was beautifully done, and it's like funny to give your little work up to a committee to pick over. And I sort of hope that in the middle of that, it did not get lost, that that work was much appreciated. And I think one of the things I wanted to say, when I was saying that, about immigrants, just really quickly, is that I think we also need to acknowledge that I think most of the Latinx people that are here today are also at least partially Indigenous people, and I think sometimes that gets lost in some of the conversations about who's who and where, where and why they're here. And so I just want to thank all of you, though, for going through this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I know it's sometimes hard for, to like have us nitpick at, at your work, but it was certainly, I, even if we had posted the way it is, I think it still has our mission and visions in it. So, looking forward to seeing the next draft, and thank you so much for all of your work.
Okay, thank you. I think that's a wrap, we'll see you tomorrow night.